Good afternoon and welcome to the special meeting of the City of Glendale Commission on the Status of Women. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have the roll call please?
Chair Burns.
Present.
Commissioner Bruzalian.
Present.
Vice Chair Magron.
Present.
Commissioner Perian.
Present.
Commissioner Simmergen.
Present.
Ex officio De La Nian.
Present.
Ex officio Garbetian.
Present.
Thank you Ms. Harab Petian. Next item please.
Item B, Report Regarding the Posting of the Agenda. The agenda for the November 28, 2018 special meeting was posted on the bulletin board outside of City Hall on November 21 of 2018. Item. Item two, Introductions and Presentations. Item two A, Introduction of New Student Ex officio Members, Maya De La Nian and Michelle Garbetian.
I would like to welcome you. Would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Definitely. Hi, my name is Michelle Garbetian. I am a second year student at Glendale Community College, majoring in political science, and it's an honor to be serving as a student commissioner. It's safe to say that there are a lot of crucial issues regarding women in the city of Glendale and worldwide, so it's a privilege to be here and I aim to be an advocate for women's rights and positive social change in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon or evening. My name is Maya De La Nian and I'm a junior in high school at Rose and Alex Pilipos Armenian School, and I'm also a student enrolled at Glendale Community College. In the near future, I would like to study law and even one day practice family law, and alongside this career goal, I also have a passion to help women and children who are negatively affected in society, specifically through domestic violence. Through being a part of this commission, I hope to join forces with its members to further advocate for women and girls in our community, which will in turn bring about a sense of peace and overall safety. Finally, I would like to thank the commission for selecting me to be a part of the commission on the status of women and look forward to this year's improvements and accomplishments. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Next item on the agenda please.
Item two B, Presentation. Melanie Drew, Deputy District Attorney, District Attorney's Office.
Good after evening, I guess. I'm not sure what it is.
Good evening Chair Burns, Commissioners and City Staff. My name is Melanie Drew. I'm the Deputy District Attorney. I am assigned, I'm Deputy District Attorney for the County of Los Angeles, and I'm assigned to the Pasadena Courthouse, specifically the Victim Impact Program. Now, the Victim Impact Program, for those who have not heard of it, is a unit within the DA's office. It can be found at various courthouses throughout the county that has specially assigned prosecutors who prosecute cases involving particularly vulnerable victims. These would include domestic violence, sex crimes, crimes in which children are victims, including child molestation and sex crimes, elder abuse, and stalking, and other types of family violence. It doesn't need to be intimate partner battering, it could be between siblings or between parents and children. A couple of things that I want to address the commission about are what the, briefly what the criminal process is like, and particularly for these types of cases, what the role of the district attorney is when a case such as a sex crime or domestic violence case has been reported and investigated by the police, the role of victims in this process, how they can contribute, what they can do in communication and in helping my office in prosecuting these crimes, and the rights and resources that are available to victims of crimes. The criminal justice process is something that I think is, it's something of a mystery for people who don't have an occasion to interact with it every day. For people who have never had any reason to interact with the justice system, a lot of times, the understanding is, well, a police report is made, the police investigate, they arrest someone, and that person goes to jail. But there is a fairly lengthy and contentious and sometimes difficult and uncomfortable process of actually convicting that person in court. And this can come as a surprise to people who all of a sudden get a phone call from my office saying, "Well, we need you to come to court and testify," when the last thing many people want to do is be involved to see that person again, have to sit in a chair in front of an entire courtroom and talk about what happened. What happens is, the police, of course, investigate the case and then they present it to my office for filing. And this is where, in cases like the ones that we deal with, particularly dealing with family violence and intimate partner battering, this becomes the first potentially uncomfortable step in the process because my office will review the case, the facts, and apply it to the law, and determine whether there is legally sufficient evidence to file criminal charges against someone. An important thing to note is that the DA's office may in fact file criminal charges against a suspect or now a defendant, even if the victim does not want that person prosecuted. And in fact, the DA's office may decline to file charges even if the victim does want that person prosecuted. And so there are various, the reason for this is, first of all, every crime has different elements, a checklist of things we have to go down and see, does this meet these legal standards? And not only does it meet those, but can I prove it beyond a reasonable doubt in court through competent evidence that's actually admissible in court? So sometimes, we may not file a case, and that may read to a victim on the receiving end as, "Well, didn't you believe me?" And it's not at all an issue of whether I believe them, it's an issue of whether it satisfies all the elements of that particular crime and whether it can be proved to a jury of 12 people unanimously in court. But I would, I would think that probably the more common issue probably is that in dealing with the cases we deal with, we often file charges when the victim doesn't want prosecution. And that may be, for a number of reasons, it may be that the victim is scared of retaliation for participating in the court process, it may be because of pressure by family and friends, it may be that that person genuinely does not want the suspect prosecuted because, of course, they love that person. And the reason is, a criminal, a criminal case is not one person versus another, as in a civil suit, when you sue someone. My office represents all of the people of the state of California, so we represent the community as a whole. So when a crime is committed, it is a crime not only against the victim, but it's a crime against the state and all of its citizens. Of course, as I'm sure the members of this commission are aware, intimate partner battering especially is something that is a cycle, and it keeps continuing with the same victim and with other victims. On average, it takes a victim about seven times to leave an abuser, and abuse tends to escalate. And so even when victims don't want it, we will step in because the person has to be held accountable for crimes. And this is probably one of the most challenging aspects of what I do because there are people who understandably are outright, can be outright hostile when dealing with the DA's office trying to prosecute a case. That's not to say all victims are, many are completely cooperative, but it is, it is a very uncomfortable and difficult situation understandably to put people in. And what we try to do, what we always aim to do, is avoid making the victim feel that they're being victimized twice. Because of course, we are going to give them a subpoena, we're going to say, "You need to be in court, it's a court order," and then they get in court, and we're going to say, "Now I need you to take the witness stand, and I need you to talk about what happened." And certainly, if someone refuses to testify, the law actually says they cannot be jailed for refusing to testify. The judge needs to refer them to speak with an advocate to see if that person can help alleviate their concerns about testifying. But I think another thing that would be helpful for people to understand in terms of just the community, victims and witnesses, is sometimes a question I hear a lot is, "Well, why do you need me in court? I made a report, can't you just give the police report to the judge?" And what people wouldn't have cause to know unless they work in this system every day is that we have rules of evidence, and so I actually cannot just show a police report to the judge or to the jury and convict that person. And so I try, we try in general to make victims aware of the process and why we're doing what we're doing. We're not doing it just to harass people, we're not trying to break people's families apart, we are trying to hold people accountable for the crimes that they commit against others. Something that victims can do in, in terms of interacting with my office that is helpful to the process is keep us updated about what's going on, keep us updated about their contact information, let us know what's happening, is the person contacting them in violation of a restraining order? Make reports to the police as soon as things happen. Sometimes, cases may not be filed right away, but the better a paper trail there is that things have happened in the past, the stronger the evidence becomes in the future. I had a case once where a victim was, really didn't want to talk to me, didn't want to talk to the detective, we couldn't get in touch with her, and then one day I got a message from a friend of hers saying, "He, the defendant, has been coming by her house, he's been threatening to burn down her house, he's been threatening her life, he won't leave her alone, he's going to kill her, why aren't you doing anything about it?" And we had no idea that it was happening. And so it's, it's important, we try to encourage victims to keep the lines of communication open with us, and at all times be honest. That's every, the only thing I ever ask of any witness when they go into court is just be honest. Don't try to make it sound worse than it was, and don't try to minimize what happened. Say exactly what happened, and the facts are the only thing that's important, and the facts are what the jury is going to decide the case based on. And finally, there are a number of rights and resources for victims, and I've provided some handouts that are examples of the resources that are available to victims when we file a case. These are things that attempt to help keep the victim engaged in the process and give the victim a voice primarily, because even though my office can file charges even if they don't want, we can actually make plea offers even if they disagree with them, but, but the overall, the goal is to always keep the victim informed and always ask them, what is their opinion about what's going on, allow them to be heard. Marcy's Law was enacted about a decade ago, it's in the California Constitution, it affords crime victims a number of rights, to be present at all points of the proceeding, to be heard at sentencing, to be heard on issues involving their safety, such as any potential setting of bail or, or release of the defendant into the community. They have the right to have a support person with them while they're testifying. They have a right to restitution, which is compensation from the defendant for any, any losses that they suffered as a result of the crime. And there also, I've provided the handout from what's what we call Cal VCB, which is the Victims Compensation Board. This is not something that's run through the DA's office, it's run through the state, but it's something that my office will put victims in touch with. This is actually a really wonderful resource available through the state. It's a fund that provides compensation for victims of crime for financial losses, for things like medical bills, counseling, relocation, if they've been injured and had to renovate their home in any way to accommodate for their, for their physical condition, and so forth. And not just crimes like domestic violence, but all kinds of serious crimes occurring to people in the state of California. And this is very important because even though a defendant may be ordered by the judge to repay the victims, as you can imagine, many times a defendant is insolvent or hard to find, hard to actually get the money from. So this is a really, this can be a really wonderful resource for victims, particularly if they're being crushed under, you know, medical bills as a result of an assault or something like that, that they couldn't, couldn't possibly pay back. My office also has a Victim Witness Assistant Program, which consists of individuals who are not attorneys, they are victim service representatives, and they are there to talk to victims, they actually go to court with the victims for support, help them understand the process, and put them in touch with resources like shelters and counseling and Cal VCB. And at this time, I don't know if the commission has any, has any questions, but that is an overview of my office and what we do and our interactions and services for victims.
Thank you so much. I'm opening it to the commission for questions.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you. Thank you for that very informative and albeit very disturbing report. Much appreciated. I do have a question. I did hear you say that you do work with the victims and point them to shelters. Do you also work with the, or partner with the YWCA locally here as shelter option for the victims?
That, I don't, I don't have that information specifically. I don't personally provide the recommendations for, for shelters, so our victim service representatives would probably have that information. But by putting them in touch with our victim service representatives and Cal VCB, and also through each of the law enforcement agencies also is aware of places, of shelters, and help in their own particular jurisdictions. So as to whether my office has ever directly referred anyone to the Y, I'm not sure, but it certainly is somewhere that we're aware of that has services.
I do have one more question. It's a little bit off point, however, related to domestic violence and other violence, especially in the workplace, having a lot of female colleagues and also being a line manager. What are the responsibilities of a colleague and also a line manager if they become aware of or suspect, you know, a battery, and let's say the employee is not saying something, are we obligated to get them to talk about it, or what should we do? What should?
Inter, okay, so if you're, if you're aware in the course, in the context of your workplace, that an employee, would this be a battery by another employee?
No, domestic.
Oh, I see.
They come to work bruised up, or
Yes.
There's conversation going on, but, you know, you're suspecting that, but...
Yes. So there are, typically, there are no legal obligations, and with that, I would, I would, there is a caveat that certain people are mandated reporters, but, and that for things like child, you know, child abuse and sex crimes, and we're talking about like teachers, you know, police officers, things like that. But let's say we're talking about a private workplace, and you're just acting in your capacity as a private citizen. There's no legal obligation by any person to make a crime report. You certainly can't help to hide evidence of a crime, but there's no obligation to be forthcoming or to tell the police you think something's going on. I think that if, if it's suspected that someone you know or you interact with day to day is, is in an abusive situation, I think the first step is to let that person know that you're always there to talk to them, and if they do open up to you, certainly encourage them to make a police report. There's nothing, of course, stopping you from making a police report, and
Okay.
You know, not at all.
Okay.
Now, the police might, you know, not necessarily be able to do anything with it if it's sort of your secondhand knowledge, but, but sometimes, sometimes it's helpful for the police just to be aware that there is a person who may be in need of help, and they can just make their presence known in the neighborhood. You know, they can do a welfare check where they just go by and they say, "Is everything okay? Do you need anything?" So even if, even if what you know, your own knowledge through other people, isn't necessarily enough to file a case, it can certainly help put it on the police's radar.
Thank you. I have one more quick question and then I'll stop, I'm sorry. Is the number for the Victim Impact Program that you just shared with, is this on our resource guide?
I'm not sure, but we will certainly check and make sure, and we can always add that to the updated version.
Okay, that's it, thank you. Yes, and I can, I'll provide that, because the Victim Impact Program, as I said, is in different courthouses, so any crimes that happen in the city of Glendale, if they're felonies, which is what the Victim Impact Program handles, ultimately make their way to Pasadena because Glendale Court is under the umbrella of Pasadena Court. So I can go ahead and provide the phone number for the Pasadena DA's office, which would be the closest location, and also our Victim Witness Assistant Program, if you'd like that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we can agree that this is a topic that's, you know, grossly understated and like not acknowledged, so thank you, it was very informative. I just had a quick question. So, you know, hearing a bunch of stories about domestic violence cases and like going to panels and stuff, it's safe to say that the hardest part is reaching out, you know, and I can only imagine how stressful it can be for someone to go in front of a group of people, like you said, and speak out. You mentioned that they can come with an advocate. Do you guys provide that advocate, or do they have to go find one like by themselves?
We do provide those. So in every, our office is arranged by branches and area courts, and the branches are the larger ones, such as in Pasadena. In every branch, we have victim service representatives who can act as advocates, also in some of the smaller courts, the area courts too. But they are, so in terms of being an advocate as far as a support person, we provide those. But certainly a victim may, we've had victims before who have been put in touch with other advocates from places, for example, like Peace Over Violence, or from whatever shelter, sometimes they'll come in with their caseworker from whatever shelter that they've, where they've found, so they can also find their own. Also, they do, a victim does have the right to even hire an attorney who can come to court and be heard on their behalf. Now, that attorney is not a party in the case, that attorney doesn't take over the prosecution from me, but, you know, if, if someone walks into court and says, "Well, I'm Ms. Smith's attorney, her victim attorney," I'm not going to say to that person, "Well, I'm not going to talk to you, I'm going to take that very seriously." And, and that's just another way that they have access to the proceedings, so that they know that their voice is being heard. So they certainly can get an advocate somewhere if they like, but we will also provide them with support personnel.
Awesome, thank you. And also, just the ones that you guys provide, do you guys also take into consideration like, if they need like translation?
Yes. So we have many, if, I mean, I don't know all of our victim service representatives, but many of them are bilingual, and if there is a victim who doesn't speak, we have a language issue, they can assign a victim representative from another court who can help that person. And then also, we have the support staff, I mean, the DA's and all the support staff, secretaries and everything at the DA's office, we have a, a number of language capabilities there, and so it's usually easy to find a translator if we have to do that.
Got it. Thank you so much.
Yes.
Commissioner Magron. Once again, thank you, we appreciate it, it's a very informative topic. I just want a careful question, because I do work with a lot of our families that are domestic families at Glendale Unified School District, and wanted to know if you are a part of, so if you have a family here, they moved to a different state, and they return back to you indicating that they are in a witness protection program, and so it's in a different state, is that valid here?
For...
Oh. Indicating that they are in a witness protection program and they cannot identify where they live, they have to be protected.
I see, okay.
So what does the law indicate? Because as a school district, we need to have an address, communicate with the parents.
I see.
But when they indicate that they are under that protection, but it's not within the state, is that valid? Do they need to get a new one? I'm very confused, I needed some clarification on that.
That's interesting. I've never, I've never had to deal with anyone in witness protection, so I'm not especially knowledgeable about it. As far as whether, I think the question is whether the protections apply here as well.
Correct.
I would, I would think so. And so I don't know how that would translate into a school district, I don't know if they're able to basically use a different, you know, a different address for purposes of communicating with, with a school district. I would, I would think that there is an interstate understanding, otherwise it would seem that witness protection would not be very useful. But, but unfortunately, I don't have personal experience with it. In, as far as in its application to my job with witness confidentiality in general, we, when a victim tells me, you know, "I've moved and he doesn't know my new address," now we have discovery obligations, we do have to give contact information for witnesses to the defense attorney, who's prohibited by law from giving it to the defendant, but there's also a way around that where we can say, well, we can tell the judge, "Well, we don't want to disclose this address, this person has moved, she doesn't want him to know it, but my office can make her available if they want to speak with her." And so that's, that's a way that we can help protect victims from having their, their whereabouts get out there.
Thank you.
My question runs along the same lines as Commissioner Magron. What if the victim can't afford to move, and they need to stay where they are, be it they own the home, and the victim gets out of jail? How do you protect that person if they can't move and they're not under the witness protection program?
Yes. So that is of course a concern. Every time we file a case like this at arraignment, the court will issue a protective order, ordering the defendant not to have any contact with the victim, and that will typically include also any minor children that the victim has as well. Could include other family members if they also reside at the address, it's case specific. And so that's the first step, is that there's a, there's a protective order. Now, of course, people disobey protective orders all the time, but it is at least one first step, and then if the person is, say, out pending their trial, so they're out on bail, or they've been released, what we call on their own recognizance, which is without bail. Released on own recognizance is much less common in cases that are serious and, you know, involve some kind of a violent assault. So this is one of the place, one of the places where Marcy's Law comes into effect is that the victim's going to be advised if that person is released on bail, just at least so they know if that person's out. And actually, the Sheriff's Department has, not the Sheriff's Department, there is a resource called Vine, which is the victim, victim something notification. So it's something that they can sign up for that will actually give them an automatic update whenever that person is released from jail. Say they make bail, so then the victim will actually get information telling them that that person has made bail. But a number of things, sometimes what we can do even is, we'll talk to the detective and say, "This person's very scared," and they can see if they can increase patrols in that neighborhood, drop by the house and make sure, make sure everything is, is going well. But also, one of the things that I believe may be available through Cal VCB would also be security measures, residential security measures, to help out with that, such as cameras. But it is of course a problem, that, you know, when someone's out and, and the victim's not able to relocate, I would say that one of the most important things is for them to keep the lines of communication open with the assigned DA and also the detective, so that we know what's going on. Even if it's, even if it's just something like, "There was a strange car outside my house, I can't do anything." Um, I can't do anything with information that I don't have. And like the, like the example I gave before, where I found out that this person had been harassing this victim, and I had no idea. Um, and once I did find that out, actually, that this person had been calling her and threatening her, uh, the judge remanded him and increased his bail about three times the original amount. So, and that, and that kept him in. Um, so I think one of the most important things is for the lines of communication to always be open. Um, no issue is too small to uh, contact me or contact the assigned detective, so that we're aware of potential threats.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, I had a quick question about regarding child abuse. Um, you, you said that uh, if the, the victim must be at court to go against, to talk to the judge. Um, if the child is being abused, how would that work? Would they be the ones going to speak with the judge as well, or?
It uh, it'll depend on the case. Sometimes if the child is very small, um, typically the abuse has been noticed by someone else, or it's another member of the family who saw it happen. Or there are injuries and we have pictures that we, that we can show as well. So ultimately, once we get to the trial phase, it may include testimony um, by, by children. Um, when they're very, very young, I mean, we try uh, what we can to not have to put children through that. Sometimes, bless you, sometimes it's unavoidable. Um, particularly in very serious cases. Um, uh, for example, cases involving sex crimes, and those can happen with very young children. And, and sometimes the child was the only one, well, usually the child was the only one who was there, and they're the only person who can testify. So uh, it is sometimes necessary. Um, we see what we can do not to put them through it as much as possible. But um, because of the rules of evidence and not being able to use hearsay, um, it is, it is sometimes required. But we will sit with them and their guardian, or whoever their parent or guardian is at the time, and explain the process. The law actually does contain a number of um, allowances for when very young children have to testify, to try to make it more friendly for them. They're given more breaks, the judge uh, controls more the questioning by the attorneys, so that the child isn't um, isn't, you know, really verbally rough-housed by the attorneys, which is completely inappropriate. Um, the judge can take his or her robe off to make it less formal and more comfortable for the child. Um, my office actually, uh, countywide has started rolling out a new program, which is actually very wonderful. We have um, what are called facility dogs, which I think we have three now. And these are dogs that go through very similar training, actually, to um, service dogs. Uh, but they're not assigned to any one person, they're assigned to our facility. And they are, they are assigned a handler who works for our office. And they can come and meet with a child victim before testifying. And then actually with the judge's permission, accompany the victim up to the witness stand and sit in the jury box with the victim. And it's really um, it's really a, a wonderful program that has shown a lot of promise.
Is that dog then guarding, or does the child feel that the dog is guarding him or her?
Yes, it's a, it has to do with the emotional support offered by animals. And the dogs, they're really um, some of the most amazingly trained animals I've seen. Um, and they actually, what they do is they curl up inside, they lay down at the feet of the witness inside the box. And they don't make a peep, and they just lay there, um, but they do amazing things. There was one, uh, I heard a DA who talked about one uh, victim who was very nervous and was, uh, she would shake her leg or her knee because she was, she was nervous about testifying. And the, and the dog put his head on her foot. And to uh, to calm her nerves, and it's uh, it's really amazing.
Thank you, any more questions? Christine?
Sorry, um, Commissioner Perry and members of the commission, I was able to verify that we do have the victim witness assistance um, phone number listed on the resource guide under legal aid. Um, and I did have a question, usually I don't have questions, but Ms. Drew, thank you for your time. I noticed that in the brochures, it's translated in Spanish, which is immensely helpful, uh, given in Glendale, we have a large Armenian community. Do you have Armenian translated materials?
We might, I'll check with our victim service representative. And actually, the uh, the, the service representative who is assigned to Pasadena Court um, is fluent in Armenian as well. So um, I'll check and see if we have these materials also translated.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next item on the agenda, please.
Item three, oral comment. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. The commission may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or discussion. Staff may refer the matter to the proper department for investigation and report.
We have one speaker. Camille Levy. She comes from the Senior Services Committee. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Burns, commissioners and staff. I am here as the elected chair of the Glendale Senior Services Committee, which probably you are not aware of. It is a Brown Act committee that was approved by city council. And our focus is to, and I want to quote, um, "As an advisory group to community services, parks and recreation, um, a resource to the senior community addressing the needs of the senior community and ensuring that those needs are met as expressed." There are over forty-five thousand seniors residing in Glendale, and I don't have to tell you that the majority of them are women. So our focus tonight is to let you know what we are doing, um, so that you are aware and able to perhaps um, assimilate the information, coordinate, um, and provide resources as well. The um, committee arose because there was a community, there were community meetings as well as um, a needs assessment that went out to seniors. The seniors then came up with several topics um, that we have prioritized. Number one, of course, is housing and housing costs. Um, number two, interestingly enough, um, is to develop um, programs and resources on emergency training, emergency preparedness, um, geared to the senior community. Number three was to develop and provide training, not only in healthcare issues, but also for caregivers. And number four is providing educational workshops, workshops to safeguard our seniors, scams, fraud, pedestrian safety, things like that. There was also a need expressed for better communication. We have over ninety-nine nonprofits located in the city of Glendale. Not everybody talks to everybody. Uh, but they all provide great resources. So our focus is to look at ways that we can provide that communication um, across the board to reach all of the seniors in our community. We certainly don't want to become known as the sun city of Southern California and only focus on seniors. So we're looking at issues of livability across the board, so that people who start in Glendale can continue to age in a continuum of care and services through their senior years. Underlying all of this are issues of mental health. We all know that um, it's um, whether you are ill, whether you are isolated, whether you have food insecurity, whether you do not have a place to live, mental health is critical. So we are also looking at issues of mental health. And I applaud Christine for bringing up, because we have, one of the recommendations um, that we have made to our city staff is that all communication and information be provided in the four primary languages of Glendale. Our focus is for two years, we are, we are in place for two years. Um, we are hoping that at the end of the first year, we can present a report to city council on some recommendations that can then be included as the city and all of its committees, commissions and departments creates their strategic plans, becomes a seamless integration, um, addressing the issues of seniors. With that, um, I'm open to any comments, and I thank you for your time. And we are in open meeting, our next one is February twenty-eighth. We will be focusing on emergency preparedness, and I'd like to invite you all to attend.
Where would that be held?
That will be held at the Adult Recreation Center.
February?
Twenty-eighth, three P M. And those are open meetings, and they are posted.
Commissioners, are there any questions of Camille?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Camille. Next item on the agenda, please.
Item four, item four, I'm sorry, item four consent items. Item four A, approval of the minutes of the special commission meeting held on August thirty, two thousand eighteen.
Thank you, I need a motion on this item, please.
I vote to move.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Chair Burns?
Yes.
Commissioner Brusalian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Magren?
Yes.
Commissioner Perryon?
Yes.
Commissioner Subergin?
Yes.
Thank you, the next item, please.
Item five, business agenda. Item five A, action items. Item one, revised draft of the two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-two strategic plan for the Commission on the Status of Women. Item one A, motion providing direction regarding plan.
Ms. Powers, could you please provide a, a report on this item?
Yes, uh, Chair Burns, members of the commission. Um, at the last commission meeting, a draft version of the CSW strategic plan that would range from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two was presented for consideration. The direction received from the commission was to have time to review and provide individual feedback to staff. Uh, that, in, that individual feedback has been incorporated into exhibit one of this report. You will see uh, the redlined um, items. And those are the suggested changes from individual members of the commission. So at this time, the commission may choose to approve the strategic plan with the redlined changes as provided in exhibit one. Um, you may choose to keep the original version, um, which would be um, what's crossed out, a combination of thereof, or provide additional feedback, um, if so inclined. And then once the final version of the strategic plan is approved by the commission, it will go to city council for their adoption. Thank you, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, uh, questions from the commissioners as to the changes that were made? They basically were run, words, just uh, additional changes in wording. But does anyone have any thoughts about the changes?
I do. Um, um, I'd like to first um, ensure that I'm um, looking at the correct mission for the uh, the CSW. Um, and that would be, I'm looking at the July twenty fifteen um, binder, um, that, you know, about the commission. And uh, it is, it states the purpose of the commission is to review, analyze, report and make recommendations to city council, and to educate and inform the general public on issues affecting women. Uh, am I correct in assuming that that is uh, synonymous to the mission of this committee?
Yes, um, I apologize, uh, Commissioner Perry and we, we're having a problem with our computer. So I'd be happy to pull up the mission. We've seemed to have lost um, all functionality of our computer, and hopefully, we're still recording on Granicus. But um, I'd be happy to pull up the official mission of the commission and read it out loud for everyone, if you would like.
I, I think that would be helpful in aligning to the changes in the terminology, um, so that, you know, we're not overarching ourselves um, with the, with the new verbiage.
Sure.
Ms. Powers, I, I don't see the mission at the beginning of the revised draft.
I don't think the mission is in the strategic plan.
Strategic plan at all?
No.
What we're talking about is the, the commission's mission.
Right, the commission's mission. I don't know if we have a, a specific vision uh, statement, but I know of the mission statement to describe why we are here.
Commissioner Perry and members of the commission, that will all be included in the final revised version. This is just, so to speak, the, the meat of it. The last strategic plan that we had did include the commission's mission, vision, values. Um, and I can read through this, I apologize that I have to read through this instead of just putting it up for you. Um, but there is a set of vision values and a mission on the commission's main page. The vision is, Glendale is a city where the fully realized potential of all women and girls enriches the entire community, where all women and girls have equal rights, opportunities and choices exercised freely, comfortably and safely, where all women and girls have a strong voice and equal participation in the affairs of the community, and where diversity is celebrated. And then there's a set of values. Our work shall be guided by the following values, equality, justice, fairness, empowerment, diversity, knowledge, collaboration, respect. Um, there's a pledge to our community. And then the mission is, the purpose of the City of Glendale Commission on the Status of Women is to advance social justice and equity and ensure equality of rights and opportunities for all women and girls in Glendale by building new and strengthening existing bridges between the city's diverse groups, organizations, agencies and individuals, by increasing the level of knowledge in the community regarding women's issues and the status of women in our community, by encouraging and promoting participation and by increasing visibility of women in all spheres of life in Glendale, including homework, school and government.
Thank you, thank you, that was very helpful, um, at least to me. Uh, hearing that uh, confirms uh, what I understand our purpose. Uh, our mission is more of a guidance committee and a guidance body. Um, I'm just going to voice some concern as far as the word, words prominence and prosperity um, uh, and success, um, maybe a little uh, too ambitious. Uh, I would, um, I would, you know, worst case scenario, I'm thinking that it may lead to um, false expectations or unreasonable expectations from the, from our committee that, you know, we sort of um, encourage, or not encourage. Uh, uh, you know, uh, our mission is to ensure success and prosperity and prominence, which um, sound like some values uh, of a committee. And I'm not sure I heard those values in the list that you read. Um, that said, if the committee um, chooses to keep these words, which is fine too, then I would recommend that we may perhaps reconsider our mission and reword that to be aligned with the, this terminology.
I think some of the words are, were changed based on the use of well-being a whole bunch of times. Well-being was, I'm sure, in there at least ten, eleven, twelve times. So the, this was the reason that there were some suggestions to change the word well-being to different words. It was just over, overkill of well-being.
But is success synonymous to well-being? Or prominence, is that synonymous? Now, prominence, uh, I, I know a lot of individuals, you know, prefer to be out of their limelight and not prominent out there. So, um, I'm just raising it as a concern that it might be a little um, different than what our mission is currently.
Well, I think the word prominence doesn't um, pinpoint an individual, but the issues to be, for the status of women, to be prominent so they can prosper. I think that's what I'm reading. It's regarding issues, not an individual.
If, if I can just um, jump in here, I think what, the, the point that Commissioner Perryon is making is that recommend to the city council policies relevant to the success of women. Um, that, the, i- i- it may not be just to the success of the women that you're reporting, but there's um, general status of uh, statistical information that you may be providing, um, uh, or other general um, information that relates to the actual status. or other general information that relates to the actual status. And so, I think that's, it's not a, if I'm understanding correctly, it's not a disagreement with the policy, but really just what is the actual, the overall mission of the Commission to allow for the goals to reflect and match up with what the mission is. That's what I'm understanding the comment to be. Not that there is disagreement with regard to, I think everyone agrees that there need to be policies that relate to the success of women, but does that truthfully align with what the mission is, which is essentially to provide, serve as in an advisory role to the City Council?
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Do we feel that we need more time to go over this again? I believe there was going to be, this, we were not, were we going to authorize this to be the agenda, on the agenda? Are we, could we talk about it some more? Do we need some more?
Chair Burns, you're welcome to provide that feedback now. This was the individual suggestions that were brought back. If you just want to go through it and say which line by line we can go through and...
Excuse me. I'm so sorry. No, I like these changes. I think these changes are very specific. And I would not spend any more time trying to change these words back to well-being. But it's entirely up to the rest of the Commission whether they're interested in giving more input or changing the words back to well-being, if that's the desire. I find these to be much more beneficial than well-being eleven or twelve or thirteen times.
Well, I, I'm certainly not counting at the, at the speed that you are. But I do see that it is repeated about, about six times.
You can turn over the page.
The trouble is that unless you are able to reach consensus at this point, deferring it to a later time is not going to advance finalizing the document because it would just go back to the committee to work on. And so, as you know, that limits the number of people who can comment, the, you know, board commissioners who may comment on it outside of an open hearing. So if you'd like to take maybe just a couple of minutes to review them, otherwise, if there's consensus on the part of the committee, you could certainly take a vote on it as is. But we would discourage you from delaying it any further because you wouldn't have the opportunity to have a discussion about it outside of this venue.
Do you want to take a few minutes and...
That would be fine with me. Is there, do you have any ideas for changes?
If, if, if we don't use success, let's say, what other word do you think would, would, you know, take the place of status and well-being in that particular point? And prominence and prosperity, what terms or term would take the place of status and well-being in point two? And same with point three? I'm just...
If I may add, I would recommend either going back to the status and well-being or I'm also fine with the term welfare. I think that's closer and synonymous to well-being. And then, I know the word is used multiple times, but I see nothing wrong with that. This is not a novel where, you know, we have to try and, you know, be, you know, have creative writing and maximize our English wording. It's a strategic plan and there are very repetitions, repetitions in a strategic plan. And having said that, the word success now pops up once, twice, three times. So, you know, who's to say? I am okay with the word welfare. On the next page for strategic aim three, I'm, I'm not sure I'm on board with the word successfulness versus well-being. I think well-being is much more descriptive and more aligned with our mission. And once again, in the third bullet, well-being versus prosperity, I would have to say well-being is much more aligned with the mission. And I'm okay with the word network to replace liaise. The second bullet in strategic aim four, I'm, I think that's, that's a good alternative. But again, in the final paragraph, I would propose to revert back to either status and well-being or welfare.
I really do not care at all for the word welfare. It has many, many different connotations. And I don't, just personally don't, would not wish to use the word welfare. Susan, what is your thought about changing status and well-being to chances of individual successes? Or any of the other changes?
Well, I agree network. I like network in strategic aim four. Chances of individual successes versus status and well-being? I don't see anything wrong with that personally.
The chances of individual successes?
I don't see anything wrong with that.
Okay. And go back up to well-being, taking out prosperity and going back to well-being?
That's fine. I mean, if you want to change the prosperity, we want to help women prosper, don't we? I mean, and succeed, no?
Go ahead. Yeah.
Oh, and I'm sorry, just in, I think I get paid towards Smith's. So I'm just trying to provide you with some assistance. With regard to strategic aim four, when we talk about chances of individual successes, you may want to note that the Commission's goal is to advance women generally and we don't work with individual women. So you may want to take that into consideration as you're deliberating the, you know, how to structure that. And...
That was number four?
That was number four, yeah.
So, so take out individual and make it a more general blanket word for women and girls?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then, with regard to strategic aim two, there are three bullet points that talk about the goals. And I think the first is to recommend to City Council policies. The second is to advise City Council on issues. And the third is to advocate for policies again. And so, if I understand correctly, goals number one and two, again, just are in an advisory capacity to the City Council. And so, perhaps those two could be combined into a single bullet point or maybe even collectively to say, serve in an advisory capacity, both to the City Council and the city as a whole on policies relevant. And since really, status is in the title of the Commission and maybe perhaps that would be an appropriate place to use the word status on the status of women and girls in Glendale.
Yeah, I like combining the two bullet points. I think that, I think that helps a lot.
And leaving the third one by itself? Combining, I don't have numbers on mine, so. A and B?
Yeah. They're just bullets.
And then, the third bullet, leaving it alone? Or does that encompass A and B?
No, A and B to be combined and leaving the third alone? Is that, is that what I understood?
Yeah, that's what she indicated.
But you didn't like the word welfare. So what word would you...
Welfare just doesn't say...
No, no, I understand. Yeah, it has different connotations.
It really does. But...
Relevant to...
Would it be an option, like, for the positive advancement of women? Or, I don't know if that flows smoothly.
Just advancement, I would think.
Relevant to the advancement of women and girls in Glendale?
Thank you. I just wanted to point out as staff that the report that the Commission on the Status of Women puts out about the, just the one that we recently did with St. Mary's, is specifically on the status of women. So there is a lot of work that is done. And as Ms. Barbetti noticed, it is in the name of the Commission. And I understand not wanting to be redundant, but there is a substantial amount of work that the Commission does on just reporting on the status, not necessarily the advancement. That is certainly tied into the mission and into the vision and values. But a lot of the base of what this Commission does is helping the community understand the status of women so that then, the community has that information on how to assist particular, whether it's women as a whole or girls or sectors. So I just wanted to point that out. I don't want the Commission to take that out and then you not have that guiding document that allows you to report on the status of women.
What about advocate for policies relevant to the status of women and girls in Glendale?
And take out well-being?
Take out well-being and welfare and just leave status?
Okay.
Okay. I like that.
So you are then using the status word importantly?
So are we, so we're combining the one and two and leaving number three by itself?
Okay.
And then, for strategic aim three, then, do we change the two words, drop both well-being, successfulness, and convert those to status? How would that read? Increase the level on it?
Commissioner Perian, your recommendation based on my notes was to keep well-being in both of those places. And, and then to, so I won't, sorry, I won't move on to strategic aim four.
Oh, that's fine. That's fine.
That's the only notes I have from the discussion on that one.
Well, I, I was just thinking, since we're going with status, do we want to replace, would it make sense contextually to just say status of women in the community for that bullet? I mean, I'm, I'm fine with well-being.
It will only be twice, Ben. Status, the word position also falls in line with status, maybe? Or, I don't know. Just throwing it out there. We can use well-being and position?
Yeah. Well...
Not in the same bullet point?
I would just prefer than just leave it, as you said, Ms. Powers, that I had asked for well-being to be there. So my call would be just leave that alone and just go back to saying well-being.
So take out successfulness?
But I surely would, I would surely leave prosperity in rather than well-being.
Work with city agents.
Well, well-being is, to me...
To the status and...
It's prosperity is well-being. That would be something that...
Once again, I think if that is the case, we would have to review our values.
Well, that's fine.
And again, the mission statement.
Perhaps we should do that, but it's, it's been standing for what, eleven years? Same thing?
I don't know.
I think it's eleven years.
Since the Commission was formed in 2003?
The Commission was started.
I would just caution, my concern is that if we put words like prosperity, successfulness, to what extent would our committee be held accountable? Should a certain group or some individuals claim that they weren't as successful or they didn't reach their full career ambitions, therefore, they deemed themselves as not successful? Or if they, you know, define prosperity in a certain income, we might want to then have to define what we consider prosperity and success.
But I mean, I would say the same thing about well-being. Well-being is a very broad word, too, that could be explained differently. For somebody, well-being would be education. For somebody else, would be health. For somebody else, it'd be wealth, mental health. So I think both of them are very generalized terms that could be interpreted differently. I would keep prosperity, if you ask me. Because A, well-being is not utilized as many times and prosperity is another general term that anybody can interpret it differently.
And that's fine. And if we choose to keep that word, I would recommend that we review the values and see if it's aligned with the values and the mission.
So keep well-being in bullet point one? Take out successfulness? And keep prosperity and take out well-being in bullet point three?
That would be my thought. What about yours? Yes, on that? And we went down to liaise and changed that to network? And I believe that that one was all right with everybody? And did we deal with the last one, status and well-being and...
Yes, we took out individual and left chances of successes.
And that was it?
Are we good?
Yep.
With, with those cha, with those changes, where do we, where do we travel from here?
Chair Burns, may I just go over all the changes?
Yes, please.
And then, let you all entertain a motion to that effect? Thank you.
We'll need a motion.
To make sure staff has what all of you have. So under strategic aim two, under the first two goals will be combined to reflect that they will be to recommend and advise to City Council policies and issues relevant to the status of women and girls in Glendale. And the third bullet will be left alone, but will keep the word status only again. So for all three, it'll be strictly referring to the status of women in Glendale.
So we're...
Is that correct?
Yes. So we're keeping the word recommend or advise City Council for the, for the beginning? I'm sorry, I didn't, I wasn't paying...
Do recommend and advise.
Recommend and advise. Okay, okay. Thank you.
Just completely combine all the...
Perfect.
And just take out the redundancy of having two bullets? And then, on the second page, under strategic aim three, in the first bullet, we will keep well-being. And the third bullet, we will keep prosperity. Under strategic aim four, we will keep the word network. And under the explanation under strategic aim four, we will, it'll be in order to improve the chances of success. Success or successes?
Successes.
Successes.
Successes of women and girls in Glendale. Those are the revisions I have. So based on this, we won't have to bring it back in February. The Commission can make a motion to adopt this and that way, we can get this in front of Council and have it adopted by them before your February meeting. Thank you so much for all your work on this.
Thank you.
Motion, please.
So we do not need a roll call for this?
A motion.
We need a motion. May I have a motion in a second, please?
A motion.
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Chair Burns.
Yes.
Commissioner Brussels.
Yes.
Vice Chair Magren.
Yes.
Commissioner Perian.
Yes.
And Commissioner Submergen left for the night.
Yes. She has left for the evening.
I believe, just for the record, I believe she left at about 6:20 PM.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, please.
Next item is Item B, Reports, Information Only. Item B1, Legislative Update.
Chair Burns, members of the Commission, as of the last report to the Commission on the Status of Women, all bills had been introduced in the state legislature, and each House had until August 31st to pass all bills. And then from there, the Governor had until the end of September to sign or veto whatever bills made it to his desk. Of the seven bills that were part of the Commission's legislative recommendations, five made it to the Governor's desk, while the other two did not make it out of legislature. Of the five bills that made it to the Governor, the Governor signed four and vetoed one. So the two bills that the Commission on the Status of Women and the city supported that didn't make it out of state legislature were AB 2124, and that was Assembly Member Rubio's bill on human trafficking, and that would have created the vertical prosecution program that would have helped members of the court stay with a particular case, rather than passing it from desk to desk, which, as we understood it, would help the chances of bringing perpetrators to successful prosecution. And the other one was AB 2340 by Assembly Member Friedman, and that had to do with non-minor dependents who were victims of sexual trafficking. So the four bills that the Governor did sign, the first was AB 2034, and that was Assembly Member Calra's bill on human trafficking notice. And this would require transit-related businesses to train employees to come into contact with human trafficking victims, so that'll take effect as of January. Another bill that was signed by the Governor was AB 2243. This was Assembly Member Friedman's bill that had to do with evidence and admissibility. So this will now allow victims of extortion, stalking, or a violent felony to block admissibility that they have engaged in an act of prostitution at or around the time that they are a victim of a crime. So they would still be tried for prostitution, but that wouldn't be held against them when they are a victim of a crime. Another bill that the Governor signed was SB 970, and that was Senator Atkins' bill that had to do with human trafficking awareness. So now, specific employers in the hospitality industry, specifically hotels and motels, will be providing training on human trafficking to employees that are likely to come into contact with victims of trafficking. And the fourth bill that was on the Commission's agenda that the Governor signed was Senate Bill 1200, and that was by Senator Skinner, and that has to do with gun violence restraining orders. So this will now create a streamlined process to obtain gun violence restraining orders, and it would remove fees associated with obtaining the order, automatically schedule a one-year review hearing, and add ammunition magazines and other firearm components to items already prohibited by gun violence restraining orders. The one bill that the Governor vetoed that was on the Commission's agenda was SB 937, and that was Senators Weiner's bill on lactation accommodation, which would have required employers to provide accommodation to nursing mothers at the workplace. And that concludes the Legislative Update, if you have any questions.
Does anyone have any comments? Nope?
No.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, please.
Item B2, Update on Domestic Violence Awareness Month Activities.
Powers, could you please provide a report on this item?
Yes. So this year, the Commission recognized October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month to raise awareness of domestic violence and help prevent and eliminate violence within the city of Glendale. And there were two actions associated with that. One was the Commission receiving a proclamation from the Mayor and City Council at the October 2nd City Council meeting, recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Glendale. And the other event took place Thursday, October 11th, and that was a partnership that the Commission had with the YWCA of Glendale and the Office of Assembly Member Laura Friedman, and that was to put on a community forum and candlelight vigil, which was, took place at the Central Library in downtown Glendale. And that event provided the YWCA the opportunity to disseminate information about a domestic violence survey that they had, they had put out to the community earlier in the year. And so they provided a report on the results of that survey. And then there was a panel discussion, which included members of the Police Department and law enforcement, legal, there's an attorney on there, our very own Vice Chair Magren was on there representing the Glendale Unified School District, as well as the YWCA. And it was a very engaging discussion moderated by the Assembly Member. And then that was followed by a very moving closing with a candlelight vigil that was led by Chair Burns. There's over 100 people who attended the event, so it was a great turnout. It was a very busy night, there were a lot of events, so the fact that there was 100 people there was very good. Seemed to get a lot of good feedback in the, from members of the audience.
Does anyone have any comments about that particular report?
No, I was there, and it was very informative, and Commissioner Magren did a great job on the panel. Very proud. And Chair Burns did a great leading of the candlelight vigil. I enjoyed it very much.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, please.
Item B3, Final Update Regarding the Glendale Fire Department's Girls' Fire Camp.
Could you please provide a report on this item?
So earlier this year, the Commission approved a partnership with the Glendale Fire Department, and that was to do the first-ever Girls' Fire Camp in Glendale. So the camp was held on Saturday, November 3rd, from about 9:30 AM to 3:30 PM at Fire Station 21. There were nine participants, including one boy, and in addition to that, there was one young observer in attendance at the camp. And there were, the Fire Department's female firefighters and ambulance operators were there alongside their male counterparts, who led the day. There were members of the Commission there, Mayor and City Council members were there, and our interim Fire Chief was there to welcome all the participants and their parents. And then from there, the participants went downstairs and had the opportunity to train on tasks that firefighters perform daily. They were able to put on safety gear, the Fire Department was able to find smaller safety gear to fit the younger participants. They used chainsaws and hose lines to knock down cones with their hoses, and they conducted search and rescues, they did auto extracations, they got to see the jaws of life in use. And they also climbed the ladder on the fire truck to the roof of the fire station. And GTV6 put together a wonderful video, and we were planning on showing that to you tonight, but due to the fact that our computer has decided to completely duck out of this meeting and not participate, I cannot show you the video, but that will definitely go up on the Fire Department's website, along with all the photos that were taken. And this camp, it's important to note that it was open to all genders, but it was called a Girls' Fire Camp, because the primary purpose of this camp was to help promote fire service to girls in an effort to increase female applicants within the Glendale Fire Department. And by calling it a Girls' Camp, you provide girls with a space for them, a safe and comfortable space to participate in these tasks and activities that they normally may not have thought were for them. And it was reported to us that all the students jumped in without any hesitation, they were sad when it was 3:30 and that they had to go home. And the Fire Department was very enthusiastic about this program, they are very thankful to the Commission for suggesting it and bringing it to them, and they are eager to participate in planned future fire camps and make it even longer. So that concludes the report.
Does anybody have any comments about it?
Thank you for the report. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm so sorry.
Go ahead.
I did attend, and my only question is, will there be an encore? And I almost wish I could be...
We wanted to do it, that's right.
Participate.
Yes, we did want to.
And climb the ladders and all that.
Yeah. It'd be very cool, why not? It'd be a good video.
And also, just on your, as you mentioned, the video, I was able to watch it today, actually, it was on YouTube, and it was very neat, it was very well put together, so after watching it, I was like, I wish I could have gone. But yeah, next time, so I'm on board.
Any other comments? Thank you, Ms. Powers. Next item, please.
Item B4, Final Update on YWCA Glendale's Empowerment Brunch.
At the last meeting, the Commission had approved a partnership with the Glendale YWCA to support their second annual Empower Her brunch. It took place on Thursday, November 15th, at the Glendale Central Library. And it was meant to inspire and connect women throughout the community. It featured a hot brunch menu, a keynote speaker, local panelists, giveaways, and extensive networking opportunities for those who attended. The theme was "Women of Influence," and the women spoke on topics about how they became women of influence in the community, how they developed their leadership potential, how they developed their personal brand, and more. There were nearly 80 people who attended the event. The YWCA was able to provide free onsite childcare for attendees. And it wasn't meant to be a fundraising event, but through their sponsorships and the support of the Commission on the Status of Women, they were able to raise $4,000 in profit, which will be put towards their programs. And the Commission's support of this event allowed for use of the library auditorium and the graphics and design and printing of their materials. So that concludes the report, if there's any questions.
Does anybody have comments about the empowerment? Well, I noticed that we made the press, top, top front page, and the call was "Claim Your Greatness." I thought that was terrific, that the, has anybody, everybody seen this?
No.
Oh, okay. The YWCA Glendale Female Leadership Conference ranged from hashtag "Me Too" to "Yes, I Can" and "Claim Your Greatness." It was a nice, it was a nice piece for the Commission and for the YWCA. Now we come to the next item on the agenda.
Item Six, Commissioner Staff Comments.
I guess we will go ahead and ask our newest Commissioner for any comments that she might have.
This was awesome, so yeah, thank you. Looking forward to a great year. Yeah, thank you.
So are we. Mr. Perian?
I just want to welcome the ex-officios, Garapetian and Delanyan, to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity. It was great speaking with all of you and introducing myself and being a part of this Commission, so thank you.
I'd like to welcome you as well, and I think you did an excellent job, both of you, for your first Commission meeting, so I commend you on that.
Nice, Jen.
Welcome, I was part of the process and part of the interview, so we are glad that we picked, and hopefully you'll be an asset to our Commission. Thank you.
Does the staff have any comments?
Yes. Chair Burns, members of the Commission, at the last meeting, there was a request by Commissioner Perian for an update of the CSW's financials. I just wanted to report that it's noted in the citywide adopted budget for fiscal year 2018-19 that the CSW fund balance is $87,603. And the other announcement I wanted to make, and the other announcement for the Commission is, you were informed of the holiday tree lighting ceremony that is supposed to take place tomorrow evening here behind City Hall in Perkins Plaza. It's been postponed due to rain. It has been postponed till this coming Monday, December 3rd, same place, same time, so it'll take place behind City Hall at 6:00 PM. I hope you can all join in the festivities. Thank you.
Thank you so very much for bringing us up to date. I'm going to take a little bit of time, because this Commission, Elena, has left, but I wanted to point out to our viewing audience what the Commissioners have done and have attended since August the 30th. I know you have to leave quickly, but I'm going to speak quickly, okay?
Okay.
Today's a good day to have a good day, huh?
It's a good day.
Good. We attended the Alex birthday party and actually got some nice press, both on the Alex Facebook and in the news press. There were three friends of the library book sale. There was a new director appointed to the library named Gary Schaefer. He had welcoming due, and the Commission was represented. There were a number of Civic League lunches, where city of Glendale directors spoke to us. The Armenian Relief Society had a health fair, the Historical Society, a home tour. There was a Woman of Achievement lunch. The Commission on the Status of Women received a commendation, and I wish to thank Eileen for stepping in for me, I greatly appreciated that. There was a Fireman's Lunch that we attended. Goodness me, this is Glendale Educational Foundation, 7 o'clock in the morning, Oktoberfest, we were there. And the Domestic Violence Event at the YWCA, the Fire Camp, the Athletic Hall of Fame, the Glendale Health Summit, nice press, and the Health Summit came about, and what came out of it were the main concerns were homelessness and mental health, were the top Glendale health concerns. So that was very valuable. The Filipina had a really wonderful party at the library. We all went to vote on November 6th. The Glendale Mayor's Prayer Breakfast was held on the 7th. The Glendale Youth Association held their gala, and the Autumn Appreciation Dinner for the Foundation of the Verdugos. Then we ran into some real trouble with Thousand Oaks and the 12 murders and the fires, and I think that kind of just threw everybody off, but we're all getting through that. The Empowerment Brunch at the YWCA, Laura Friedman did a terrific job, and we were very proud of the Commission and the involvement. I don't know who attended the gun violence on Monday evening at Woodbury College. Did anybody go? We're gonna have to find out about that, Ben. Schiff and Portantino had a discussion. I guess the tree isn't going to be lit till Monday. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
And, let me see, what else? December 4th, the Portantino Women in Business Luncheon. And the Senators also having an Xmas party on December 16th. The Glendale Historical Society is having a Doctor's House Tour. And then we want to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and Happy Holidays to everybody. May I have a request for a motion to adjourn?
Request to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you for all your thoughts, and I believe that we're adjourning, and I can't see the clocks. 7 o'clock, 7:00 PM. Thank you so much.